I'd like to call this special meeting of the Hinkley Township Board of Trustees order on Thursday, correction, Monday, August 26th, 2024 at 4:00 PM, for the purpose of a work session and to go into executive session to interview fiscal officer candidates. We'll call the role Engelmann.
Here.
Asherol.
Here.
Sweattick here. And fiscal officer Kath Woods here. One of our candidates so far. So. Do we have a pecking order that we want to do first?
I don't think.
Would you like to go into executive session first? Okay. I will move we go into executive session.
The interviews were four and 4:30.
At four o'clock to interview fiscal officer candidates.
Second.
Second by Asherol, call the role Engelmann. Oh, yes.
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 Sorry about that.
No worries.
It was 5:35.
We'll move to come out of executive session at 5:35 PM.
Second.
Second by Asherol, call the role, Asherol.
Yes.
Engelmann.
Yes.
Sweattick, yes. Move to go into executive session to discuss the employment of a public employee at 5:35.
Wait, second. I seconded it. And now call the role, I'm in my chair and at 5:35.
Call the role, Engelmann.
Yes.
Asherol.
Yes.
Sweattick, yes. Now move to come out of executive session at 6:11 PM.
Second.
Second by Asherol, call the role, Engelmann.
Yes.
Asherol.
Yes.
Sweattick, yes.
So since you're here, can we sign a couple of plans? Our plan we have.
I suppose so.
You all got a raise.
Be back in session.
This is a lot split for Marcus Smith, badly. He is.
Thank you, Martha.
Good night, Martha.
Good night, Martha. He is a 26. What's going? Oh, you're right behind me.
Sorry.
I didn't see it. I thought she was out in the hallway.
It always brings the zonk on.
That's here. You want me to figure it out? Right in the day. Second. Oh, it's so cold. Okay.
I'm sorry, but I'm cold. Please let the fire department say too.
You'll be warming up when you get home.
Yeah, that's true.
We're back on the trash stuff.
Back on trash, baby.
So we left off, we'll talk about implementation plan. I will stop moving implementation plan. There was two sections.
Give me a paragraph number, please.
Uh, let's see. 4.1.
4.1, very good. Collection.
Can you give me a page number?
Well, you, I have page 11, but I don't know if mine printed the same way as yours.
4.1?
Yeah.
Okay, and I now have the original one we looked at, so. Okay.
Okay, and then. And then when you look at, so 4.1 says that included in exhibit one is the implementation schedule, okay? Then if you go to section 4.12, schedule. Towards the second to the last dated item. It says implementation plan due at regular trustee meeting Tuesday. So if the implementation plan is due with the bid. And then it's saying in the schedule that the implementation plan is due at some regular trustee meeting after the agreement has been executed. My question is. The initial implementation plan in exhibit one, that would be like an initial implementation plan. And then the one due at the trustee meeting would be like the final implementation plan? Because maybe those dates are gonna shift based upon any discussions that take place between them or tasks change or whatever. So I just found it confusing to call them all implementation plan. And if you're submitting it with the bid. And then you're submitting one after you execute an agreement. It's, it could be the same plan, but there might be a final version of it.
Mm-hmm.
So I would suggest that what is in 4.12 in the schedule. Indicate like final implement, implement either final revision, implementation plan due at regular trustee meeting. Final revision of implementation plan or final version. Because to me, and then you go, so then you go to 5.2, sorry, there's one more spot. Where it says honor before that date, the contractor shall submit an implementation plan containing the dates by which the following activities will be completed. So there's a third. Spot. And I, again, is that the initial implementation plan? Or is that the final version after execution of the agreement? And it, to me, that seems to be the final because it's saying. When they'll complete the purchase of sufficient number of vehicles, collection containers and equipment, which.
This is gonna be the same date. This, this, chapter five is the detailed scope of services. So it breaks it all out. And it says in the implementation plan, it will also include all these activities. So that's, that's what that's speaking to.
So is that then referencing the implementation plan from 4.12? Or is that? Which is the same thing as exhibit one? I mean, I don't know what happened last time. I know you guys probably don't either. But um. I'm sure, I'm certain that whatever got submitted with a bid response may have not been the final version of the implementation plan, just because dates may have changed or quantities may have changed.
Oh, wait a second. So collection speaks to the implementation schedule. Not the plan.
Collection. Specified by bidder in a proposed routing schedule included in exhibit one implementation schedule. Is maybe that last phrase not proper? Is it the proposed routing schedule, a different exhibit?
It looks like it's its own exhibit, exhibit one.
But exhibit one is already named implementation schedule.
Right, that's the same as 4.1.
Okay. Then what is the difference between what's in 4.1 and what's in 4.12?
4.12. Is the implementation plan, which 5.2 spells out everything that's in there.
Oh, let me just see something. I just see something. When you go to exhibit one, it's titled implementation plan. When you go to 4.1, exhibit one is titled implementation schedule.
And in the table of contents, it says implementation, implementation schedule.
So should exhibit one be titled implementation schedule? Is that what that is?
I would think so.
Hmm?
I would believe so.
Okay. That would make a lot more sense. Because then an implementation plan they're submitting after the. Agreement. That makes a lot more sense.
He said exhibit one.
Yeah.
So change that to schedule.
See, that should say schedule, not plan.
Okay.
Okay. So.
Yeah, so.
That's good. All right.
4.1 done.
4.1, and we went through, we did 4.6 where you took out. Some, a sentence there that didn't read right, just above 4.7. Like um.
Are you asking me? I don't have anything.
Yeah, following the receipt of all bids.
Yeah, did you strike that?
Yeah, stroke, struck that. That sentence begins with the township, not reserves.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Oh, you're referring to our last meeting.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, yeah. And then 4.8. No, I couldn't read what I was writing, but I had C-section 7.3. So I need to see something. That was performance bond. Let's see. So. The 4.8 and 7.3 both talk about performance bond. And they both basically have the same language. But 7.3 looks like it was a rough draft of that paragraph. So if you read through those two paragraphs, you see how similar they are, then all of a sudden. In 7.3, it says in the amount of 100%.
So strike 7.3 because. 4.7, or I'm sorry, 4.8. 4.8 is more detailed.
Yes, it has an extra paragraph.
Than 7.3, so strike 7.3.
Right.
Strike it.
I would agree with that.
But section seven is titled performance bond, performance assurance, bond, insurance and indemnification.
Then keep 7.3 and just have a refer back to 4.8. I mean, you know, that's. Section four.
Again, section four is instruction to bidders. This is a separate document unto itself.
Then, then perhaps what is in 4.8 should be in 7.3.
Add the extra paragraph.
And all that should be in 4.8 is that second paragraph. No, the second paragraph has to go first. I mean, if section seven is discussing the amount of the performance bond. And section 4.8, I think, just needs to indicate that they need to submit a performance bond. But not necessarily, you don't want to have the terms in two places. Because, you know, you edit one and then you forget about editing the other, and that's exactly what happened.
Well, if we keep it 7.3, then we need to change that 2,800. Residential units in the township, it's in the first paragraph, we need to change that to 3,438. If we're gonna keep it.
If you're gonna keep it, then copy what you've got in 4.8 in totality.
Not in totality because 4.8 is talking about the bidding process.
Wow, this is true. Well, really. The only difference in the paragraph is introductory.
Right.
Sentence there. So, but there's also. This, in the amount of 100% of the consideration of nine months of the collection agreement, which is just kind of like some phrase that didn't get edited out. And I mean, copy either 4.8 into 7.3.
Well, if you copy 4.8 and take out that first sentence, but that is a really long sentence that carries on to the next page. That sentence is like a paragraph in itself.
The.
On 4.8.
The in addition to the required bid bond of successful bidder, that sentence.
Yeah, but that, I mean, look how that sentence goes. All the way over to here and it starts, the next sentence, which should be the first sentence. The performance about bond amount shall be calculated.
Right.
By multiplying, so, I mean, when I'm saying it's a long sentence, it's like five lines, but do you see it?
Yeah, it's the same as the one below, isn't it? It is. Performance bond calculated by multiplying the base bid. I'm on a card service, 190, yeah, it's the same sentence. Residential units.
I'm not talking about that sentence, so I'm talking about this.
This one up here?
In addition to the required bid bond. So you're gonna take, starting right here with the performance bond. You're gonna delete everything before that.
That's down here too, though.
Right. Except this is talking, because we're gonna copy and paste, right? So we're just taking out um. Um, you're talking about, okay, you're talking about what you're gonna add in to. We're talking two different things, okay?
No, this, what I'm saying is, section four is instruction to bidders.
Correct.
So that's basically a document in and of it to itself.
So right here, the performance bound, the performance bond amount shall not be. So everything below that, you're gonna copy. And just put that into 7.3 and delete all of 7.3 now.
Or delete the whole thing?
Delete all of 7.3, copy all of the rest of 4.8. So the only thing you're not gonna copy from 4.8 into five, what, what number is it?
Your, your issue is by putting it here, it's duplicating it.
Well, number one, 7.3 has got, is like it, nothing was cleaned up. It's got fragmented sentence and then it's got incorrect information. But basically, it's the same information as in 4.8. And 4.8 has an additional paragraph that explains what the purpose of the performance bond is. Which. So if, you know, if you line up those two paragraphs and read them back and forth, line by line, you're gonna see where it all of a sudden doesn't make sense in 7.3. Sorry, this is a fragment and then this has got to be all reworked because it's not consistent with this.
It looks, you're saying that that paragraph is different than this one below here? The only thing I see different is the performance bond is attached, may be renewed, that needs to be corrected.
And the 2,800?
Yeah.
And then you've got that fragmented sentence in the amount of 100% of the consideration.
Do you think that's fragmented?
Well, do you think it?
On respects, or is there other such, or such other security acceptable to the township in the amount of 100% of the consideration performance of nine months of the collection agreement?
Yes, it's just accurately structured. The performance bond as attached is probably what it was meant to read.
So what are we doing?
What would you like there, Cindy? I'll do whatever you want.
I don't know.
Look, I, I don't see an issue with it because, like I said, it's, this is instruction to bidders up here.
I think 4.8 reads perfect. I think it's 7.3 that's messed up. From the point of where.
Okay, you read 7.3, I'm gonna read this to you while you read it to yourself, okay? Let's see if it copies. Within 14 days after receiving the notice of award, the contractor, regardless, public or private in nature, shall furnish and maintain for the duration of this collection agreement, including any renewal terms, a performance bond executed by a duly authorized surety acceptable to township in all respects or such other security acceptable to the township. The performance bond amount shall be calculated by multiplying the base bid price for unlimited car service for 196 gallon collection container for recyclable materials and 196 gallon collection container for solid waste by the number of residential units in the township, 3,438 by nine months. The performance bond may be renewed by a substitute surety acceptable to the township provided that the terms and conditions of this performance bond obviate the surety to honor the performance bond until the township accepts in writing a substitute surety. Does that not read the same or no?
Okay, and you read 4.8?
Correct.
All right, so now that's how 7.3 should read.
Does it not?
No, because it has 2,800.
Okay, I corrected that.
And now 7.3 does have that extra phrase of in the amount of 100% of the consideration for performance of nine months of the collection agreement, and that's fine. I guess that could stay there.
Okay. Anything else is good?
Everything else is good. Okay, 5.1.
Wait one second, because this last sentence has a. May be renewed. By substitute surety. Acceptable. And maybe renewed. We need a hand in there. Okay, go ahead.
Hey, 5.1, the private roads, there's only two that I am aware of. Maybe Mike might have any, if he's familiar with anything. Might be worth asking him, but I think those are the only two private road lanes.
What, what number are we on? We're bouncing all over. We are bouncing all over the place, giving me whiplash.
Well, that's because 4.8 called in 7.3, but now we're back to 5.1.
I'll check with the.
And then I just want to double.
And what, what was your question with the 5.1?
Oh, the private roads. I'm aware of only two, and I'm just saying that maybe Mike Perry, if, if there's anything else, he might know, but I don't think there are any other private roads lanes.
Okay.
You know, where they have to put all the trash out.
Yeah.
At the end of the, it's like a trot, you know, private, it's not.
I thought we had already verified that, like, I, I remember specifically talking about this because it's highlighted in the original.
I had to ask Cindy to check with zoning.
As far as I, you know. So all I could think of is, you know, if, is a double check, and I asked Harry.
Okay.
On 5.2, just want to look at a number C there. Just verifying their township approved written notices to residents to be sent. So we're gonna review what they're gonna attach to the. The cans.
Say that again? 5.2, C.
It says township approved written notices. Will be sent to each resident along with a contractor-owned 96-wheeled collection container explaining procedures and obligations.
Actually, we should remove the township from that.
We shouldn't approve the notice, or no?
That's what I'm asking, because like.
Because we're trying to remove the township. From having its fingerprints on the trash, right? That was what we said.
Right. And who would approve it? Would it require a meeting for us to approve the document?
So what do you want it to say, the contractor?
It would just say written notices to be. Written notices, yeah, contractor.
Just remove township approved.
So written notices to residents will be sent to each resident. Because it says the contractor shall submit an implementation plan which the following activities will be completed. So it's already saying that it's the contractor's.
Okay.
Job.
Um, in the previous paragraph right there. The last sentence, you know, 5.1, it says residential units shall be required to adhere to the opt-out affidavit process in 510E, is that still applicable?
Hmm, no, we got rid of the opt-out affidavit process. We got rid of that.
We didn't pull it out yet, that was. Are we gonna modify it? Or we're just taking it all the way out, E?
Oh, I see.
510E.
Right, so in the E, which is also highlighted yellow. If the residential unit requests to opt out, they are to contact contractor and fill on them where the solid waste will be deposited in accordance with Medina solid waste. And such opt-out requests will be. Granted by the contractor.
Did you add something in there just now?
I did. I, I had that last sentence, that last fragment because like.
In accordance with the Medina County Solid Waste District regulations.
And such opt-out request will be granted by the contractor.
That's 5.2E?
5.10E.
5.10.
Oh, 5.10.
Got a yellow highlight on it. So I think.
I was going to say, I don't have that.
There you go.
Okay.
So I think 5.1 is fine because that, I wouldn't call it opt-out affidavit though. I would just call it opt-out procedures as set forth and get rid of affidavit process.
I think you need to put something in there about they can't just call and say that. They don't, they have to make arrangements with the contractor.
And that's what E says. That's what 5.10E says. If the residential unit requests opt out.
Yeah, but how do they request opt out?
They are to contact the contractor and inform them where the solid waste will be deposited. That's what's in 5.1.
How about, how about they are to contact the contractor for approval or something like that? 510E.
Oh, I see. They're to contact the contractor for approval and inform them with solid waste.
Oh, that's why I highlighted this whole thing in yellow because we, I made all of that up because we didn't, um, we did not agree on the language, just that it needed to be put in here. That's, okay. Boy, this is confusing going off of both documents. The original and the draft.
Well, I don't know why.
Because this is, this is the one, this original is the one that we did in our original meeting. Then the one that I edited was actually the draft. So, so many things were different in this, the electronic version I got versus the hard copy that we went off of the first time. Does that, that probably doesn't make sense.
It does make sense, but you changed them all?
It makes sense in my mind.
You changed them all in here in the, well, the electronic one you sent us? That was my concern before that the electronic one didn't match up with.
Right, like I, I went through, but I didn't go through with the fine tooth comb to make sure. That's why I am, have them both right in front of me right now to make sure. Is there anything which we're not going to need? At the end of the day, we're not going to need because we're going through this now with the fine tooth comb. Does that make sense? Like it's clear in my head. Is it making, is it clear to you?
No, it's not clear to me because that probably went through legal before it was included as part of the bid.
But this is all going to have to go to legal anyways before, so.
Well, when I went through these edits, I went through the original plus the markups from our first meeting, so.
Okay.
All right, so what I put in that sentence, if the residential unit requests to opt out of the required services, they are to contact the contractor to obtain an approval to opt out and inform them blah, blah, blah. Sound good?
Okay, yes.
I like it. That was 5.10E, so let's move on to 7.14.
No, we're back at 5.2.
Okay, so.
All right.
Okay, I just have a question on 5.10.
Wait, didn't you say you had something in 5.2 yet?
That's where we were leaving off. We moved from 5.2 to 5.10 to make sure that it agreed.
Right.
We took out township written notices, so let's work our way down. I don't have anything in three or four, 5.3 or 5.4.
Oh, believe it or not, I don't have anything until 5.10.
Okay, back to 5.10?
5.10 it is.
So, 1, 2, 3, the fourth paragraph.
Is there a letter?
No, it's just the fourth paragraph of, it's above the A thing. It's that last paragraph above where it says A unlimited.
Residential units?
Yes. So it says residential units not registered for bag service or unlimited prior to such and such date, which I assume is the contract start date. I don't know. Shall automatically be registered for unlimited services. Wouldn't it be correct to say that residential units not registered for bag service or unlimited services or opted out?
No, opt-out means you're opted out.
Right. So if they're not registered for unlimited service prior to contract.
They're not registered for any service. They've opted out.
So it's going to.
So the default is that.
The default is unlimited.
To go to unlimited.
Right.
But they're supposed to be opted out.
What's next?
I, I'm with Jack on this one. What's next?
Okay.
Because Kimball is, or, sorry, God, I always do that. The single hauler that wins the bid will be the one who is.
Dealing with it.
Dealing with the opt-out, so.
Subparagraph D, next page. It says with the contractor to orchestrate this change. Can we just say with the contractor to make this change?
Sure.
Subsection G.
Mean agree directly with contractor to make this change. That's what you want to make? Okay. Okay.
And then subsection G, same thing. So contact director, contract, so contact the contractor directly to orchestrate the removal of the recycling. How about shall contact the contractor directly to coordinate removing.
Just you want to change coordinate. You want to change orchestrate to coordinate.
Well, and get rid of some of the words. You could just say shall contact the contractor directly.
To arrange for the cart exchange?
Yeah.
That's what my mind says.
To remove. You're in subsection G?
Oh, I'm in F. I'm sorry.
Oh, is there another orchestrate I missed?
No, it says arrange in the previous one.
Oh. Yeah, so to arrange and whatever. It's just the removal of the recycling procedure for removal. You know, it's kind of like.
Directly to arrange for the removal of the recycling cart. Next.
All right, good. Section 5.11. 1, 2, 3, fourth paragraph down where it says contractor may decline to collect any cart, bag, can, bulky item not so placed during snow removal season, solid waste, solid waste recycling should be placed in driveway, all carts should be placed at curbside, no further than 10 feet from the opening of road or on top. I don't know, I guess that just, just reads funny to me.
I think it's okay.
That's right, okay.
Yeah.
Next paragraph, the contractor, upright position with the attached lids closed. Didn't we say we weren't going to require the lids to be closed?
We would like that to be, but
Okay.
Not enforceable. The next paragraph, I just changed the word, the contractor, so. Collect such materials after I change resident to residential.
Ah, yeah. Got it.
Next.
6.6.
Almost skipped too late there, Jack.
The by agreement either the township and the contractor may maintain a list to residents. Isn't this?
I have that highlighted too and I don't know why.
Because it says either the township or the contractor may, so don't we want to?
Make it the contractor?
Make it the contractor. And then I think referring to exhibit 3, no, exhibit 3 is oh, residential units requesting carryout collection service shall be required to complete the verification document shown in exhibit 3, which is the medical pickup.
So we're just going to say the contractor will maintain the list?
Right.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Oh, so 6.7, the suspension of collection services for vacation shall not exceed 90 days and can only be requested once per calendar year period. Is, is that a hard and fast rule? What if people snowboard in our?
It's the hard and fast rule with our current.
Is it? So I guess people.
See if we raise that up, then.
Going to impact opt-out, yeah.
Right.
I guess, so I guess, okay, so I guess if somebody wants more, they can just contact the contractor and arrange it on their own, so, okay. 6.9, in the event the contractor, last sentence, in the event the contractor fails to edit, oh. The township shall have the right to perform such cleanup services using township employees or other contractors and buildings contracted to cost. We, we still want to keep that in there?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. 6.11. About the summer, the contractor shall notify the township of any residential unit not collected due to a violation, providing the address and a description of violation, the contractor shall provide township copies of all tags left. So do we want to just X out those last two sentences?
Yeah, that's fine.
Because those are those tags you get. Well, for a while we were getting them out.
I get them emailed to me for whatever reason they don't, you know, like if.
Right.
Yeah.
So, cool.
So. So then the, the onus is on them to enforce the violation policy?
They're going to leave a tag as to why they didn't pick it up. It's just that they're not notifying the township of the reason. 7.5. Proof of insurance. It says originals of the policy shall be delivered to the township properly upon commencement of the term. Should, is it sufficient say to township or should they be delivered to township fiscal officer?
The township.
Okay. 7.7, you've got a lot of space between the word contract and shall.
Where's that? Oh, I fixed that in mine. Yeah, okay.
All right, section 8.1.
Yeah, I've got that one highlighted. That must be Monique's.
Yeah, so I had a question marker for the last, the second paragraph on that.
What's wrong with 8.1?
Is that the, I, I don't know, I had a question in kind of.
Okay, so to refresh your memory, this is what 8.1 looked like in the original ones we were going with?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And.
Okay, so, all right. Okay, I guess I just want to make certain that the 90 days was still. So if, if somebody doesn't pay their bill now.
You know what it was? I didn't, I didn't write 8.1. This, remember, this is the draft, so what is in 8.1 in this I think is what we wanted.
Removed.
Removed?
That's what.
We wanted all of this removed?
The pink part. This is why we're doing this.
Right, but we wanted this in here.
Yeah.
And we wanted the top two paragraphs.
Top two. Okay, we, we took this one. So you're saying we want to include this one too?
Okay, so I left that. And I, in the last paragraph, I took out that last sentence. The contractor shall on a monthly basis provide to township a list of residential units for which collection service has been discontinued and for what the collection service has been reinstated. So I took that out because.
We don't need to know that.
Correct. Okay, so I kind of cut and pasted and added in the language and I highlighted it in yellow so that you guys could put your legal eyes on it.
What does the title mean?
What does the title mean? The title of 8.1 or? It looks like. It looks like two residential units should just be deleted.
That's what I'm asking.
Contractor to charge and obtain payment of service charges from residential units. Oh, contractor to charge and obtain payment of service charges from residential units to residential unit. So it's like we're billing the residential unit to the residential unit, not the township. I think I just swapped out like township. It made sense in my head when I was doing this.
Contractor to charge and obtain payment of service charges.
From residential unit to property owner? Would that make more sense?
Well, I don't know that we want to bring in property owner. That's a new definition. We've been calling everything residential unit.
Okay. Or just.
What did it say before? It said township?
It said to the township. Contractor to charge and obtain payment of service charges from residential units as agent of the township.
As agent of the township. So we just take out two residential unit, but it just goes all onto them.
Okay.
You just took off two residential units in there, right?
And then are you fine with everything else in there?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I think the question mark was just because I didn't, yeah.
Okay.
And then 8.2 was review meeting of generation volumes. You probably did that already, Jack.
What did I do to it?
Add the word meeting. It was review, it's.
Show me to review the volume.
Values is to be review meeting of generation volume.
That was supposed to be, so I made changes to that. Annually, at the request of the township, Medina County Solid Waste District or contractor, the contractor district and the township shall meet to review the volumes of solid waste and recyclable materials collected from the township. collected from the township and its residents and delivered for disposal or processing. This was, um.
Right, and I'm just talking about the title. Just said review, and I. We're gonna make, say, review meeting of generation volumes, just cause it's a meeting. I, whatever, you know, I guess doesn't really matter. Eight point four. We need to get the current tipping fee?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, oh, there's two eight point fours.
Son of a gun, I, because I deleted. I, so I didn't update that, so. That second eight point four adjustment, changes in custom fuel should be eight point five.
Okay, so in eight point five, that fuel adjustment table?
Mm-hmm.
Should we, um, run it out, because, um, the cost of fuel is more than diesel price listed there, like current price of diesel's more than that? Sometimes it's been over four dollars.
Where are you looking at?
The fuel adjustment table.
Scroll down.
So like, it only goes up to three dollars fifty-nine cents a gallon for diesel. And, like, that's probably.
That was pre-COVID.
Yeah, that, that may be what it is, maybe, right now, but typically, it's closer to four dollars, closer to five dollars sometimes.
Yeah, we'll have to update that.
So if we were to run that out, um, what would be the applicable adjustment percentage? Cause it looks like, for those different increments, they kept adding a half a percent. But those are, you know, at that rate, um. That's three fifty-nine, that's every ton, every ton sounds is a half percent. Oh, that's what the, you know what, that's what the paragraph says. Adjustment equals half percent for every ton to increase or decrease. If the, you know, you're just, if the increase or decrease is within a range posted in the table, then a fuel adjustment may not be applied.
What this is saying is that if the fuel goes down so much, you're gonna decrease by twenty cents, you'll decrease the price by one percent.
Right.
That's, that's all it is.
Okay, all right, I was.
So not changing?
No.
Not changing.
Okay.
Just, we'll put the base price in.
That's it.
Get out of town.
That's it. I don't think I have anything on the bid forms, I did, oh, bid form three, yeah. Yeah, bid form three, all those years have to be changed. You've got nineteen through twenty seven.
Ah, okay.
Bid, bid form one, I changed the word city to township, just so you know.
You changed what?
The word city to township.
Oh, and that's where it was.
Yeah. Bid form, bid form three, what do you have, the dates?
The, the years have to be changed, starting out, and the same with bid form four, it starts out with twenty.
The tipping fee has to be updated in there too.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so the other thing too, though, I just noticed bid form three, under waste disposal, it says approximately eighteen hundred residential units.
Uh, what number are you on?
Bid form three.
The three.
See, right there, it says approximately eighteen hundred residential units, that needs to be changed to.
To the thirty.
Nine.
Hold on.
Thirty-four eighty-three.
There you go.
Well, is it thirty, forty-three minus fifty?
Yeah, what?
Take, you have to take into account any of the, like, I don't even know.
Where did that eighteen hundred number come from, we don't know that.
Right, I don't know. So based on price per residential unit. Okay.
Um, I've seen that number before, and I think, I do not know, but I think that was the number that they were originally. Is that what they were originally thinking, we had for residential?
In twenty nineteen.
That can't be that low, they can't think that it was that low in twenty nineteen.
We had that twenty-eight hundred, like that, maybe it was supposed to have been twenty-eight hundred, it's at eighteen hundred, I don't, I don't know, why even?
It was three thousand seventy-seven, yeah.
And we say that where, we, we tell them that, right?
Yeah.
So. Why? Why are we?
I don't know.
Given an approximate number that we want a firm price. Should we even have that in there?
Um.
It says.
Perhaps.
Wait, it says the unit price that is proposed by the contractor, based on the anticipated district tipping fee of fifty dollars per ton. Are they attributing that to approximately eighteen hundred residential units, a ton of waste?
Or the number of unlimited service?
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, if, if it's how much tonnage, then it should be eighteen hundred ton. If you're thinking it's tonnage.
Are we sure that RU is residential unit?
Nope.
Well, yes, because the costing here is per RU per month, per residential, price per residential unit per month.
Hmm.
So, I'm, yeah, I would say RU is residential unit. We don't do that in, on the other. We don't do it on the other ones, or on the other bid form.
Well, the other bid form looks totally different also. Well, cause the other bid form is beg, not unlimited.
See, so. Oh, no, it said, no, well, it does, it says approximately eighteen hundred, RU's also there on bid form four.
That doesn't make sense.
No, not at all.
Hold on a second, let me look. Ha, 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 because this is the draft, remember, this is the one that was actually sent out, it actually says approximately three thousand seventy-seven residential units.
Okay.
So, that eighteen hundred should be the thirty-four.
Let's make it thirty.
Thirty-four, thirty-eight.
Thirty-four, thirty-eight.
That's what it should be.
We're gonna say approximately thirty-four, thirty-eight.
Thirty-four, thirty, well, that's the number we've been using throughout the entire document. Stop being difficult.
Well, I understand, but what, what, what's the number over there, you said?
Three thousand seventy-seven.
Thirty-four, thirty-eight it is.
And you have to do it on bid form four, flip the page, go to bid form four, and it's.
I knew I saw that eighteen hundred somewhere else, okay, so that's what it was, so, in the actual, the original form that they actually, that we originally used, these were the, this was the updated numbers.
Maybe that's why I didn't look at it, because.
Three, four, three, eight.
Three, four, three, eight, approximately. But I think the approximate, so they're not holding us to a number, you know what I mean, like?
No, I get it.
I think I'm done.
Yeah, you said that before.
Well, then hurry up and adjourn.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, 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 exhibit three, exhibit three. Exhibit three.
Hang on, I'm getting there.
No.
Hinkley Reservation is not a township facility. Is that in there?
I'm still in bid form.
A-actually, I think that one just had, like, nothing. Yeah.
Exhibit.
Or. Exhibit two, I'm sorry. Yeah, so.
Coback is spelled incorrectly, and.
One, and there's like a whole lot more here, you, you know, in the.
Township Hall and Police Department, Service Department, Coback Field.
So we need Fire Department, uh, cemetery should be its own.
Where are we at here, please, exhibit three?
Exhibit two.
Forty-nine and fifty-three.
Okay. Exhibit two.
So, um. Hinkley Reservation is not a township facilities list, location. And then Memorial Park, Bronkers Park, Youth Fields, Coback Fields, River Woods, Nature Preserve, Beach Cemetery, Maple Hollow Ridge, Buzzard Day is not a township facility, so that comes out. Fire Department, and then to scratch that cemetery.
But I think, that, I, what I'm thinking is, these are dumpsters we're talking about, our service department goes around and empties these trash cans at, um, Memorial Park, at Bronkers Park, at, uh, Beach Cemetery, Maple Hill Cemetery, I'm, I would assume our service department goes around and empties those, because I don't see Kimball drivers pulling over the truck and emptying an actual, you know what I mean? So that is why for the actual bid document that went out to bid, the only ones listed there is Town Hall and Police Department, Service Department, and Coback Field. Now. Probably because the service department and the fire department use the same dumpster. That's why fire department is not listed.
Oh, okay.
And then Coback Field.
In two, one, it says the price shall include an extra charge collection services provision of containers at township facilities identified in exhibit two.
So I would just, I would just go with these.
You're looking at container as a dumpster container.
A dumpster container.
Services at township facilities, contractor should provide collection containers at township, location, number, container type, and container size, like stated in exhibit two. Contractor shall collect all solid waste deposited in the collection containers contained, stated in exhibit two.
I don't know, exhibit two should just be.
That's it, those three?
Those three. But for Coback Field, I would not TBD, I would put one, six cubic yard, because that's what they have there now. They've got a dumpster there now.
So you want me, is this what was in the other one? It is.
It's just, it deleted a lot.
Okay.
It deleted a lot from the one that you're operating off of right now.
Okay. Make those changes. Exhibit two. Are you in three now, Cindy, or are you good? Yeah, sure.
Um, so. Do we want to, um. I mean, once this is, these edits are all done, do we wanna send this to the prosecutor?
Uh, yeah, we'd think so.
Oh, and Coback is spelled correctly.
Yeah.
On the one, not there, but on your form, it's spelled correctly.
All right, I'll make the rest of these and get it to you. You know, this was mine.
Yeah, I know, I was just gonna say, it originally was yours, so if you want it, you can have it, but then the monkey's off my back.
I just want the, what do you call, list?
You can have it.
Okay, give it back, dude.
You can, I, I prefer not to have it, so, um. I would like to, um. Before we adjourn the work session meeting, um, wanted to think, um, about your thoughts on maybe doing, um, a post um, that can be linked back to the website, and maybe giving our residents, like, meet Nicole, our new zoning inspector. Um, maybe a picture of Nicole with, you know, talking about, uh, her past experience to kinda get it out there, so people see, you know, uh, where she came from, and the.
I'm okay with that, I think that's a good idea.
Well, I'll talk to her.
Kinda like an interview, like, meet our new zoning inspector type of thing, so, um. If you want to, you can write it, or if not, I can talk to her and I can write it.
Why don't you do it, cause I'm too close to it. That way you've got the.
Okay, as for our social media policy, I wanted to ask you both that, so, okay, great, I will talk to Nicole. And that is all I have for work session.
Very good. You good?
Um, I just wanted to bring up one thing, um, I was at E N T's offices today, part of the security, uh, Hila system, but what that is, um, bringing to light is, because it's gonna connect into the network, no matter what product vendor we go with, that we really need to have somebody like that company document our current state of our network, because it is not documented, and there's a lot of stuff that is nearing end of life, and it's not on maintenance, and, um, so. They seem to be, of all the vendors I've talked with, they seem to be quite knowledgeable in terms of, you know, understanding the fiber connections and the plazets.
Mm-hmm.
So if, you know, I'm just thinking, I'm, I'm gonna ask them maybe to come up with a proposal, it will probably, you know, they may do it for free, but on the other hand, it's probably something that might end up being a cost, I don't.
I would suggest maybe having a discussion with, uh, police and fire too, relative to their needs, and may, maybe we do it. You know.
Well, I would, it would, it would require all three locations to be part of it, so, absolutely.
Okay.
But, uh.
Oh, and I wanted to let you both know, I, um, was, one of the roofers reached out to me again, following up on, um, you know, that we still were interested in doing the roof again, uh, this year, and I was going to reach out to everybody again and get quotes, you know, we're, we are nearing the time where it's gonna start getting really cold, and I was thinking about, you know, now the energy savings that we have with the east wall, um. Maybe it's time to think about energy savings with a roof and having a roof re-done, so I was going to reach out to the contractors that I had spoken to six months or more ago, and ask them, you know, if those quotes are still good, or if they need to update them, so I'm sure prices have not gone down. But, um, I was gonna bring those to the next meeting, if you both would be, um, ready to discuss that at our, if I get them
Okay.
by next Tuesday. Okay.
Okay.
Very good.
Over holiday weekend, right?
Pretty good.
I'm good.
I'll move to adjourn at seven seventeen P M.
Second.
All in favor?
All right. Um, Jim, if you're still on there, um, we're going to end this meeting and start a new meeting, so if you wanna log back in, I'm just letting you know, I'm gonna kick you out.